Hello.
If you want to mention to anybody that wants to speak tonight, there are speaker request forms outside. I've got a couple right here. They look like this. If you have some testimony tonight, please step out and fill out one of these forms. And we'll call you when we get to that point. You're so awesome. Thank you.
Hello. We're all here.
Green for go. Hector, are you ready?
Ready, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's call the order of the first special meeting of October 2nd. Roll call, please.
Councilor Colley, Board Member Colley.
Here.
Member Penimera.
Here.
Member Greider is not present. Member Pasezville.
Yeah.
Member Byers.
Here.
Member Parra Miller.
Here.
And Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you.
Or member Airsfl. Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you. Next item is speakers heard on non-agenda items. And I don't have any on non-agenda items. The next item on the agenda is item three. Items from the Executive Director 3.1 is review of the Gateway Trailer Disposition Plan. Staff report, please.
Chairman, members of the board, I apologize. This will be a little bit of a lengthy report, but I wanted to go through it in some detail for everyone present. The city received a request by Representative Pam Marsh to not implement the conveyance to current residents. That element of the gateway transitional housing program. Trailer disposition plan and to continue the operation of the Gateway Transitional Housing Site through the end of calendar 2025. As a background, the Intermediate Housing Solution Program established through House Bill 5006 is intended to provide intermediate housing to Labor Day 2020 wildfire survivors on their pathway to securing permanent housing recovery. The 53 travel trailers located at the Gateway Site were purchased by the state through its Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. And initially provided to the nonprofit organization Rogue Retreat as a part of the Intermediate Housing Solution Program. In February 2023, the Talent Urban Renewal Agency took ownership of the 53 trailers through an intergovernmental agreement with the state. That agreement stipulates that Tura must provide a disposition plan for the travel trailers that has been approved by the state. In February 2023, Tura and OHCS, the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department retained access as the project site manager. The city or the agency also entered into a lease agreement with Access. A trailer disposition plan was developed in 2021, but was never approved by the Tura Board. Staff worked with representatives of OHCS and Access to update that document through a series of meetings every other week for several months. The Executive Director has also conferred with the Phoenix Talent School Superintendent and the Jackson County Fire District 5G. The disposition plan was approved by Tura in June 2024 and has been updated as more information concerning residents became available. At the June meeting, the staff reported that Access staff was contacting Gateway residents concerning the possibility of relocating with the trailer they currently occupy. But this did not take place. Access indicated that a questionnaire and packet of information concerning the program should be developed. Tourist staff collaborated with Access and OHCS in the development of that packet and provided the packet to Access on August 21st. On September 13th, the Executive Director contacted Access Chief Operations and Housing Officer Joe Volmar to inquire as to whether the packet was being distributed to the Gateway residents as tourist staff had received no inquiries. Volmar responded that same day that they had not proceeded with distributing the packets and that Representative Marsh requested that she be aware of anything being distributed before they gave it out. So we sent everything to Representative Marsh for her review. Volmar also said that our team still needs to meet and discuss the process that will be used on distributing all of the information to residents on the best time to do it. If there's any input you have on the process or timing of distribution, let us know. The Executive Director decided to wait for the next scheduled meeting of the partners, which would have been OCHS or OHCS and Access on September 24th to address the matter. At that meeting attended by OHCS and Access staff, tourist staff was advised that there had been a meeting between OHCS Executive Management, Representative Marsh and Access staff during the week of September 16th. And that the outcome of that meeting was the direction not to proceed with the agreed upon disposition plan with respect to conveying trailers to current Gateway residents and to provide funding to Access for continued management of the Gateway Site and case management through December 31st, 2025. Tura was not invited to that meeting. At the meeting on September 25th, OHCS Disaster Recovery Director Lauren Dresen queried of access as to what would be accomplished during an 11-month extension that could not be accomplished within the next four months. Response was that it is anticipated that more permanent housing opportunities will become available in the next 12 months. This is consistent with the view expressed in the Marsh email of September 11. Additionally, Mr. Volmar reported an extension would provide access with time to create an action plan for each resident. Volmar said that they would not be using the questionnaire developed jointly with Tura, but would develop their own survey. That they had not collected information from current residents to enable them to develop an action plan. It was also mentioned that some Gateway residents were turning down good opportunities for relocation because there was no real incentive to move from the Gateway. Volmar attributed this in part to residents getting mixed messages from the City Council on the project completion date with no real deadline. Volmar said it would take a few weeks to gather the needed information. Staff would note that it seems the only agency offering an incentive for residents to relocate from the Gateway has been Tura in offering to convey ownership of the trailer in which the resident is currently residing, coupled with OHCS offering to pay the cost of relocation. Staff also met on September 25th with OHCS Re-Oregon Grant Manager Julie Loverin concerning the status of the West Valley View Peer Funded Project. We were advised that a grant award letter and grant agreement were in progress. Loverin was not aware of the discussions or direction concerning the extension of the Transitional Housing Project. She noted that the peer funded project must be completed by mid 2029. We discussed completing some elements of the project such as improvements to Gagnon's Loop and Wagner Road and engineering for the Gateway Site before the Transitional Housing Project is concluded. There may be conflicts in attempting to do this as preliminary engineering or handling stormwater from both Gagnon's and Wagner. Consider the existing and possibly enlarged swale on the Gateway Site as a key element for handling stormwater for the entire project. In staff's opinion, we could finalize concept plans for the Gateway Site while the trailers are still present. But developers would be disinclined to respond to an RFP for redevelopment as the ongoing use as a transitional housing site would be present would present an uncertainty. Loverin also advised that they were including funding for relocation of the two non-fire survivor residents from the Transitional Housing Site and the peer funding allocation. Tourists should wait until peer grant agreement is fully executed before proceeding to convey a trailer to these two residents as federal requirements on relocation assistance are now in effect. On September 26th, the Executive Director sent an email inquiry to Dresen with the following inquiries. One, why was Tura excluded from the meeting of OHCS Representative Marsh and Access? Who attended the meeting? And was there any other agencies represented? Two, if a Gateway resident is interested in accepting ownership and relocating their trailer, will they receive any relocation assistance or support in moving from OHCS or Access? Three, is it the position of OHCS that the agreed upon disposition plan is now void? And four, in addition to compensating Access for services for up to an additional 12 months, is OHCS willing to compensate Tura for the use of its property for up to an additional 12 months? Actually, it would be an extension of 11 months. There's a supplemental staff report that I would like to move to at this point that was issued after a further conversation with OHCS staff.
Gary, can you, first of all, Greider is in the attendant, she's in attendance. I think she's in the the other room, whatever that's called. And then Gary, can you let us know what page you want to start us on? Is that the disposition policy travel trailer?
So I'm, I don't see any page numbers in my.
He wants to read the second staff report.
So you're talking about the issue before the board update on staff report.
Page 11 in the packet.
Update of the staff report. It's a page 11. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I had a conversation with Mike Savara, Special Initiatives Director at OHCS, who reports directly to the Executive Director Andrea Bell. While Savara noted that OHCS does not have plans to reengage Tura regarding any changes to the disposition plan, he agreed that it would be appropriate for Tura to request a written proposal from OHCS for a plan to close out the project going forward, including a time extension past January 2025. He confirmed that OHCS would pay relocation costs for moving the families and the trailer they currently occupy if the family chose that route and that OHCS was open to compensating Tura for the continued use of the land. In an email dated September 30th, Savara wrote, I can confirm that the FAQ at the end that we sent him, the frequently asked questions document about how the disposition of a trailer impacts an applicant's future access to other reorgan programs such as HARP and HOP is accurate. We have determined that if an applicant were to take ownership, it would not count against them as far as eligibility for future program applications. They would still need to meet all other eligibility requirements, of course. But the ownership of this temporary option doesn't constitute a determining factor for ineligible. For HOP, we have renamed the program for clarity to Down payment assistance or DPA. And we expect that that program will roll out for applicants in early 2025. We have some administrative steps with HUD we will need to take care of before it rolls out, but that's our current timeline. I think that will be a big part of our conversation about the need for more time on the site. To help clarify the role of Access in this matter, Tura requested a copy of the agreement between OHCS and Access. Attached is the exhibit that describes the scope of work to be performed by Access, the sub-grantee. This agreement was first entered into in July 2023, and there have been three amendments, the last amendment being in August of this year. To clarify, OHCS is not directly paying Access for management and maintenance of the Gateway RV Site. Access collects and retains rents from the residents. And OHCS provides rental assistance to the residents. The basic access role under the agreement with OHCS is to navigate fire survivors from transitional to permanent housing. I've attached the scope of work from that agreement. Other attachments include the Gateway Trailer Disposition FAQ and the trailer disposition letter to Access. Trailer disposition plan that was approved by the Tura and the Marsh, Melman, Volmar email chain, which started this discussion. Staff has reviewed matter and we present you with the following. Staff is looking for direction from Tura on the following questions. Does Tura wish to withdraw its offer to convey trailers at no or below market cost to current Gateway residents? And does Tura wish to extend the use of the Gateway Site to support the Gateway Transitional Housing Project through December 31st, 2025? Staff suggests that Tura may wish to consider the following six items. One, request a written proposal from OHCS for continued operation of the transitional transitional housing site on Tura property. Two, request a proposal from Access for renewal of the existing site management agreement or lease no later than October 23rd. Three, indicate that Tura may be willing to consider an extension through June 30th, 2025. Four, establish a firm end date for the use of the property for transitional housing as June 30th, 2025 or some other date, but not later than December 31st, 2025. Five, request that Tura be compensated for continued use of the subject property. This could be through a lease agreement with OHCS. And six, as the state paid for trailers, the trailers proposed to the state that OHCS assume ownership of the trailers remaining on the site effective January 31st, 2025. Other actions that may be considered depending on further interaction with OHCS is to interact directly with Gateway Fire Survivor residents who wish to take ownership of the trailer in which they reside and relocate and convey the trailer to them directly.
Thank you, Gary.
Concludes my.
At this point. One of the things I discussed with Gary prior to the meeting was reading the scope of work and reading the lease agreement that we have. It's going to be really important as we decide moving forward, what are the next steps to support this mission? Is to understand what everybody's responsibilities are, what the roles are, what our lanes are. So I know that OHCS had provided us with a copy of the agreements that are between OHCS and Access. What I saw was a contract for the emergency rental assistance project activities exhibit A. And this is for the grant. I thought it was 2.4 million, but I guess there's been a couple of amendments and it's now at 9 million for the project for housing. Do I have that right?
Yeah, that agreement is not exclusively for the Gateway Site. It's for a broader geographic area. But the initial contract has been amended three times, the latest in August, which brings the contract grant amount a little over 1 million.
Yeah, and the scope of work kind of makes that clear is that it's a much broader project. And that really, I mean, Gateway is just one of the tools in this larger picture. But their agreement says an emergency rental assistance project activities. This is addendum A. It's in your packet on page 36. Description, the Oregon Emergency Rental Assistance Program is a program designed to assist households that are unable to pay rent due to financial hardships that occurred due to or during the pandemic. Scope of work, sub-grantee shall comply and perform and shall cause and require by contract that its sub-recipients comply and perform all work to the satisfaction of the agency. The remaining provisions of this section two are supplemental and do not limit obligations to the sub-grantee arising from the subsection two A otherwise under this agreement. So it's section B that talks about scope of work and this helps better understand kind of our lease agreement as well. Sub-grantee shall and shall cause and require sub-recipients to contract to administer the program in a manner satisfactory to the agency and in compliance with all the program requirements, including but not limited to the following terms and conditions. B1, develop and implement a comprehensive rental assistant and related supports program that may include rapid rehousing and homelessness prevention to enable timely and equitably equitable delivery of resources to communities who are impacted by the 2020 wildfires, including but not limited to communities of people of color with disabilities and other groups as defined by the agency. B3, prioritize applications for program services in alignment with the U.S. Treasury and agency requirements. Applications must use the HMIS Service Point Software provided by the agency as the platform for capturing applicant information and processing prioritization. Conduct eligibility assessments for households with the following requirements as well as any other requirements. The agency, sorry, I just had a window pop open on me. Let's see. The platform capturing of prioritization, conduct eligibility assessments for households with the following requirements as well as any other requirements the agency imposes through the program guidance. A household is eligible for assistance under the ER A2 if the household experienced financial hardship that occurred due and during the pandemic, has a household income of below 80% of area median income. One or more individuals within the household can demonstrate a risk of experiencing homelessness or housing instability and the household experience a loss of housing due to the 2020 wildfires. Utilize grant funds to address the unique needs of those impacted by the 2020 wildfires who are not yet fully rehoused or recovered. That I appreciate being able to get that information because it does sort of give us a clearer understanding of the relationship and kind of the lane that OHCS holds with Access. And the other document that I brought tonight, and I'm going to ask that we add this to the minutes for the record, is the lease agreement between the City of Talent and Access for the Gateway Transitional Title Lease Gateway Transitional RV Park. And again, I feel like the importance of putting this into the record is that as we discuss how, how to move forward and timelines and that sort of thing, really, the lease agreement tells us how we can move forward in many ways. What are the allowances that that property provides? And I'm going to ask Dave to comment on recital. See, when I'm done reading this lease agreement, if you could. Because again, this lease agreement really demonstrates what allows us to use the property for that purpose and how it is that we are able to create any extensions if. uh, and how it is that we are able to create any extensions if if that's if and the conditions under which we can do that, according to this lease. Uh, so uh, if you'll indulge me, uh, members of the board, this is a few pages long. I might even get tired of reading and might punt it over to somebody else uh, to finish, but I'll get it started. Between the Urban Renewal Agency and the City of Talent, Tura Lesor and Access, the Lesi. Um, here are the recitals. A, on March 1st, 2023, the interim city manager of the City of Talent entered it entered Executive Order 2023 dash zero one dash EO to authorize the continued establishment of temporary emergency accommodations throughout the City of Talent in response to the housing prices created by the loss of residents from the Almeda Fire on September 9th, 2020. B, Lesor is the owner of the real property, commonly known as 102 and 104 South Pacific Highway, Talent, Jackson County, Oregon, and more particularly described as thirty-eight West, blah, 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 tax lot numbers. C, on April 5th, 2021, the interim city manager of the City of Talent approved a Type One Land Use Application to allow the property to be used as temporary emergency accommodations pursuant to Executive Order 2021 dash zero three dash EO here and after the TEA approval. The approved project on the property is known as the Talent Gateway Transitional Housing Project, sometimes referred to herein as the project. By the way, I I I hope I made it uh, clear that this is uh, the agreement that we have with uh, Access. Um, D, Lesor has developed a portion of the property to create Talent Gateway Transitional Housing Project consisting of fifty-three spaces for recreational vehicle and support structures, infrastructure, in compliance with the terms of the TEA approval. Lesor owns fifty-three recreational vehicles located on the property. Lisi is a nonprofit public benefit corporation that provides food, warmth, and shelter to promote stability for vulnerable populations in Jackson County, Oregon. Lisi desires to lease the portion of the property that Lesor has developed into the Talent Gateway Transitional How uh, Transitional Housing Project herein after ca- uh, the Gateway Transitional RV Park for the purpose of providing transitional housing and other assistance to survivors of the Almeda Fire and their families, sometimes referred to as program participants. In order to best provide transitional housing to the survivals uh, to the survivors of the Almeda Fire and their families, Lesor and Lisi hereby agrees as follows. Um, one occupancy. Lesor leases uh, leases to Lisi the portions of the property which have been or are, you know what? I don't have my glasses and it's I'm now I'm struggling with it. You want to read it? So I'm down here at the bottom here. I can't believe I didn't bring them, but I didn't. Actually, probably in my office.
You're on second term?
Bottoms, bottom is occupancy.
One occupancy of the page. Okay.
Yeah.
Agreement, one occupancy. Lesser leases to Lisi the portions of the property which have been or are to be converted into the Talent Gateway Transitional Housing Project as more clearly depicted on the attached Exhibit A here and after the premises or the Gateway RV Transitional Park on the terms and conditions set forth in this lease agreement, the lease. For avoidance of doubt, the premises including the existing fifty-three recreational vehicles located in the Gateway RV Transitional Park. Two, term. The term of this lease will commence on the effective date and will expire on January 31st, 2025, unless terminated earlier in accordance with the terms of this lease. If requested in writing by either party no later than December 31st, 2024, Lesser and Lisi shall discuss the extension of the term of this lease for a period of up to two years, including the terms and conditions applicable during such extension. And if Lesser and Lesi agree to such extension, Lesser and Lesi shall execute an amendment to this lease evidencing the same. Three, rent. No rent is payable by Lesi under this lease. The consideration for this lease is Lesi's performant of its obligations under this lease. Four, relationship of parties. Lesi is an independent entity and shall never be deemed to be performing services on behalf of Lesser or the City of Talent. Lisi is not to be deemed an employee or agent of Lesser and has no authority to make any binding commitments or obligations on behalf of Lesser. Five, use of the premises. The premises shall exclusively be used by Lesi for the Gateway Transitional RV Park in accordance with the TEA approval, the terms of this lease, ORS four four six point two six five. And Lesi shall, at its own cost and expense, comply with all applicable city, county, state, or federal laws and regulations. Lesi's tenancy is not subject to ORS Chapter ninety. Lesi may only enter into occupancy, license, or other use agreements with program participants. Lesi shall comply with and assume all obligations under intergovernmental agreement grant funding number seven four four six with the State of Oregon with respect to the operation of the Gateway Transitional RV Park, except for the obligation to maintain property insurance on the recreational vehicles. Lesi confirms that it has received a copy of the grant agreement. Without limiting any other term of this agreement, Lesi agrees to comply with the confidentiality provisions of Section thirty-five of the grant agreement. Six, responsibilities. Six point one, Lesser's responsibility. Six point one point one. Lesser shall have no obligation of any kind to maintain or repair the premises except to the extent of Lesser's obligations under Section six point one point two, immediately below. Six point one point two, upon receipt of notice of inhabitability, as such term is defined in Section six point two point seven below, Lesser shall, at its own cost and expense, determine whether to improve, repair, or dispose of a recreational vehicle. Six point two, Lesi's responsibility. Six point two point one, emergency transitional residential program. Lesi shall be responsible for implementing the Gateway Transitional RV Park on the premises with a specific purpose of providing temporary shelter to program pers- participants. Lesi shall also provide case management services and assistance to find safe, affordable, permanent housing to such persons. Program participation shall be prioritized for families and individuals whose homes in Phoenix and Talent, Oregon were destroyed by the Almeda Fire. All reasonable efforts will be made to fill any vacancies with this priority population. If, after exhausting all efforts, no priority population tenants can be found, then Lesi, after written notice to Lesser, is allowed to use its discretion to fill the vacant RV spaces with other low-income and vulnerable populations. Six point two point two, control of management of Gateway Transitional RV Park. Lesi shall maintain full control of Gateway Transitional RV Parks such that Lesser may not dictate or otherwise require Lesi to modify its residential program content or criteria, except as otherwise provided for herein. Six point two point three, collect program participation fee. Lesi may, and if in such case, shall be responsible for collecting reasonable program participation fee from program participants. The participation fee shall be utilized to pay for Lesi's costs and expenses in running Gateway Transitional RV Park. Lesi may also apply for grants and seek other available funding sources to provide for the needs of the Gateway Transitional RV Park. Six point two point four, insurance. Lesi shall at its own sole cost and expense maintain insurance as further outlined in Section eleven below. Six point two point five, grounds and maintenance. During the term of this lease, Lesi shall operate and maintain the premises in a safe and sanitary condition, in good condition and repair, including providing routine and ongoing cleaning of the grounds. All maintenance and repair costs for the premises shall be paid by Lesi. Without limitation, during the term of this lease, Lesi shall be responsible for performing regular scheduled preventative maintenance. Six point two point six, property taxes. Lesi shall be responsible for payment of any and all property taxes associated with the premises. Six point two point seven, notice of inhabitability. Lesi shall regularly inspect the recreational vehicles, and if Lesi determines that any recreational vehicle is not fit for habitability, it shall promptly issue a written notice of the same to Lesser, notice of inhabitability. Seven, as is condition of premises. In connection with this lease, Lesi has inspected the premises prior to entering into this lease and accepts the same as and accepts the same in there as in condition without representation or warranty of any kind by Lesser. Eight, termination. Notwithstanding any other provisions hereof, to the contrary, the lease shall be terminated as follows. Eight point one, expiration of term. The lease shall expire on January 31st, 2025, unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provision set forth below. Eight point two, for convenience. Lesser or Lesi may terminate the lease at any time for its convenience with sixty days written notice to the other party. Eight point three, for cause. Either party may terminate the lease if the other party is in breach of any provision hereof, which breach continues for more than ten days after a notice describing the breach has been given. Unless, in the case of a breach which cannot be cured within such ten-day period, the breaching party immediately initiates and diligently prosecutes a plan of curative action that is acceptable to the non-breaching party. Notwithstanding the foregoing termination for recurring breach may be made if the breach is uncured within seven days after the second notice in any twelve-month period and immediately without opportunity for cure in the third or any subsequent notice of breach in any twelve-month period. Eight point four, loss of funding. This lease will terminate at the election either party in the event that fines for the project are withdrawn or discontinued. In this event, advance written notice, which sets forth the effective date of the termination, which shall be no less than thirty days from the giving of such notice, and a statement that the termination is due to a loss of project funding will be provided by the terminating party to the other party. Nine, default. Except as otherwise provided in this lease, an event of default shall occur upon the failure of Lesi to cure a failure to perform or abide by any term, provision, or condition of this lease within thirty days after written notice is given to Lesi by Lesser, specifying the nature of the default with reasonable particularity. If the default is of such a nature that it cannot be completely remedied within thirty days, this provision shall be deemed complied with if Lesi begins correction of the default within the thirty-day period and thereafter proceeds with reasonable diligence and in good faith to remedy as soon as practicable. Lesser may require, as a part of the cure of any failure to perform or abide by any term, provision or condition of this lease by Lesi, reimbursement by Lesi to Lesser of any and all costs and expenses incurred by Lesser by reason of Lesi's default of this lease. Ten, parties' obligations upon termination. Ten point one, vacate premises. Upon termination of the lease, the party's right and obligation shall be as follows. Ten point one point one. Lesi shall vacate the premises on or before the effective termination date and shall remove any property of Lesi, including any and all temporary structures that it owns, perform any cleanup, alterations, or other work required to leave the premises in clean and usable condition and in conformance with the terms of this lease. Ten point one point two. On the effective termination date, Lesser may re-enter, take possession of the premises, and remove any person's property by legal action or by self-help with the use of reasonable force and without liability for damages. Lesser may deny access to all program participants except for the limited purposes of removing their personal property. Access may be limited to regular business hours. Any personal property of Lesi and or program participants remaining on the premises forty-five days after termination of this lease for any reason shall be deemed abandoned by Lesi and the program participants. And Lesser may make any disposition of such personal property as it deems appropriate. Ten point one point three. Following re-entry or abandonment, Lesser shall have no further obligation hereunder and may grant all occupancy rights and privileges to any other entity. Ten point two, return of property to original condition. If this lease is terminated for any reason or upon actual termination, Lesi shall be responsible for returning the premises to its original condition subject to reasonable wear and tear and casualty. Ten point three, damages. If this lease is terminated for any reason, Lesi shall not be liable to Lesser for any damages or costs incurred in removing program participants or their personal property from the premises. Lesi shall, however, make reasonable efforts to relocate program participants of the Gateway Transitional RV Park and/or encourage program participants to remove their personal property. Lesi covenants that all agreements between program participants and Lesi shall shall provide that program participants shall promptly vacate the premises and remove their personal property promptly upon the termination of this lease. Eleven, indemnity and insurance obligations. Eleven point one, Lesi indemnification. Lesi shall indemnify and hold Lesser in the State of Oregon and their respective officers, directors, officials, agents, and employees harmless from and against all claims, actions, liabilities, costs, including attorney fees, and other costs of defense caused or alleged to be caused and arising out of or in any way related to one, Lesi's use or operation of the Gateway Transitional RV Park, specifically including the acts or mission of program participants. Two, Lesi's failure to comply with any provision of this lease. Or three, any other action or failure by Lesi or Lesi's employees, agents, officers, and contractors, including any tort as now or hereafter defined in ORS three zero point two six zero. Eleven point three, Lesi insurance. Lesi shall maintain and enforce for the duration of this lease the insurance coverages typed and requirements specified in Exhibit B to the grant agreement and shall additionally name Lesser as an additional insurer to all insurance that the State of Oregon is an additional insured under such Exhibit B. Eleven point four, property insurance. Lesser shall maintain commercial property insurance on the recreational vehicles as required by Section seventeen point two of the grant agreement. Lesi shall promptly notify Lesser of any damage to any recreational vehicle. All insurance proceeds shall be payable to Lesser but subject to the terms of the grant agreement. Lesser shall have no obligation under this lease to repair or replace any recreational vehicle that suffers any casualty or other damage. Twelve, amendment. Any amendments to this lease, including exhibits, shall be in writing and signed by both parties. Thirteen, nondiscrimination. During the performance of this lease, Lesi specifically agrees as follows. Thirteen point one, Lesi will comply with the nondiscrimination provisions of um, title nine, eleven? My Roman numerals. Thank, thank you. Been a lot of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, Fair Housing Act, twenty-four CFR one hundred and Executive Order one one zero six three twenty-four CFR one oh seven. Thirteen point two, Lesi will comply with prohibitions against against discrimination on the basis of age under Section one oh nine of the Housing and Community Development Act, as well as the Age Discrimination Act of nineteen seventy-five, twenty-four CFR one six one four six, and the prohibitions against discrimination against otherwise qualified individuals with handicaps under Section one oh nine, as well as Section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, twenty-four CFR eight. Thirteen point three, Lesi will comply with the equal employment and affirmative action requirements of Executive Order one one two four six as amended by Order one twelve zero eight six forty-one CFR sixty. Thirteen point four, during the performance of this lease, Lesi will not discriminate against any employee or applicant for employment because of an individual's race, religion, color, sex, national origin, ethnicity, marital status, familial status, age, sexual orientation, or source of income, a juvenile record that has been expunged pursuant to ORS four one nine A point two six zero and four one nine A point two six two, or because an individual is a person with a disability, which with reasonable accommodation by the employer does not prevent the performance of the work involved unless based upon a bona fide occupational qualification reasonably necessary to the normal operation of the employer's business. Thirteen point five, Lesi will comply with the American Disabilities Act forty-two USC one two one three one and forty-seven USC one five and two zero one, two one eight, and two two five, which provides comprehensive civil rights to individuals with disabilities in the areas of employment, public accommodation, state and local government services, and telecommunications. The Act also requires the removal of architecture and communication barriers that are structural in nature in the existing facilities. Fourteen, attorney fees and costs. In the event action is commenced to enforce or interpret any of the terms of this lease, including but not limited to any action or participation by Lesi or Lesser in or in connection with a case or proceeding under the bankruptcy code or any other successor statute, the prevailing party shall be entitled to recover all expenses reasonably incurred at, before, and after trial and on appeal and review, whether or not taxable at costs, including, without limitation, attorney fees, including estimated fees to collect a judgment entered in favor of the prevailing party, witness fees, expert and otherwise deposition costs, copying charges, and other expenses. Fifteen, compliance with laws. Lesi shall comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, ordinances, and regulations at all times. Sixteen, the lease embodies the entire agreement of the parties. There are no promises, terms, conditions, or obligations other than those contained herein. Lease shall supersede all prior communications, representations, or leases, either oral or written, between the parties. Lease shall not be amended except in writing, signed by both parties. Seventeen, survival. Any duty, liability, or obligation of a party which arises under this lease, including, without limitation, obligations with respect and indemnification, shall survive the termination or expiration of this lease and shall be legally enforceable until satisfied by performance or payment or until enforcement is legally precluded by lapse of time. Eighteen, no third-party beneficiaries. There are no third-party beneficiaries of this lease. The parties agree and intend that this lease shall be enforceable only by the parties and The parties agree and intend that this lease shall be enforceable only by the parties and their duly authorized representatives. Nineteen, effective date. In witness hereof, in witness whereof, the parties have, through their duly authorized representatives, executed this lease on the date set forth below, the last date being the effective date of this lease. Twenty, notices. All notices, demands, consents, approvals, reports, and other communications to the lesser as provided for in this lease shall be in writing and shall be given to the lesser as set forth below or at such other address as it may specify hereafter in writing. All notices, demands, consents, approvals, reports, and other communications to the Lessee provided for this lease shall be in writing and shall be given to the Lessee at the address set forth below or at such other address as it may specify hereafter in writing, the lesser's addresses to Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Talent, the Lessee's addresses to access. Any notice or other communication that is not emailed may be delivered by a recognized overnight delivery service, providing receipt, or mailed by your United States Registered Order Certified Mail, returned receipt requests, requested postage prepaid, deposited in a U S Post Office box or depository for the receipt of mail regularly maintained by the Post Office. Notices sent by overnight courier shall be deemed given one business day after mailing, and notices sent by registered or certified mail should be deemed given two business days after mailing. Notices sent by email shall be deemed given as of the date sent, if sent prior to five P M Pacific Time, and the sender does not receive a bounce-back notice that the email transmission was not completed. Twenty-one, counterparts electronic signatures. This agreement may be executed in counterparts, each of which shall be deemed an original, but all of which together shall constitute one and the same instrument. Execution of this agreement by electronic means is intended to preserve the original pictorial appearance of this agreement, or by industry standard electronic signature software shall have the same legal force and effect as execution by original signatures.
If you appreciate that a lot. But there's some really important information in here on how how we can, you know, it talks about how we can extend it so on. So, Dave, maybe you can offer a little more explanation about Section C, which talks about the emergency order that allows us to that allows us to use this property in a way that's outside of our, outside of our code.
Sure. First of all, let me just say, I'm sure you all appreciate it as I did, the beauty of that legal prose.
Yeah, yeah, it was a lot, but you know, there is, there's information that affects this decision all the way up to the end, you know, so, yeah.
Absolutely. Well, if you look at recital C, it refers to the emergency order that was passed shortly after the fire. And that allowed for temporary emergency accommodations for the duration of that executive, that emergency order. That emergency order was to expire, or did expire actually, on the, in March.
March of twenty twenty-three.
And just before that, as referenced in recital A, we passed a new emergency order, a slightly reduced one. That's still allowed, though, for a temporary emergency accommodations, as long as that emergency order was still in effect. And it is still in effect, can be terminated at any time. We go back to our regular land use laws with respect to Gateway. If the city manager cancels that emergency order, or the council cancels that emergency order. And at some point, that will need to be done, because we can't operate under an emergency order indefinitely.
And we, do we have a termination date on the current executive order?
There is no termination date. It is left up to either the city manager to terminate the emergency order or the city council to terminate it.
So we previously had a termination. What I'm getting to is I want to make sure that if we, when, if, and when this, if or when this board decides to extend, if that's what the board decides to do, I want to make sure that, that if we need to extend the emergency order in order to do that, like, I don't want that to drop off, if that's the case. Because I, my understanding was that it did have the same termination date. And I only, I only say that because of the neighborhood that we, that we dealt with on the C E Ts and the the like-for-like rebuilding. It seems to me that the, the concern they had was that it would be ending in January of twenty twenty-five. Does my memory serve me wrong?
No, there, there is a, in state law, the like-for-like rebuilding terminates in, I think it's April of twenty twenty-five, could be, could be May. But that, that only is with respect to the state law and the like-for-like rebuilding of residents.
Okay.
So, the emergency order stays in effect, doesn't have a termination date, other than to say it can be terminated at any time by this, by the city manager or the city council.
As, there's a couple of things that I think we're gonna need. One of them is, I recall somewhere along the line, there being, when we first did the emergency order, we first did the extension, the, the extension of the emergency order, there was some advice given to us about the la, the allowed length of an emergency order according to state law. So I want to make sure that we're not going to be running afoul of that, any, any ordinance, I mean, any O R Ss, should, should we decide to, to continue on with the executive order? Or if that's the case, what do we need to do in order to make sure that we're not running afoul?
We wouldn't run afoul of, of any state limitations on the, the timeframe for these, the executive or the emergency order. One can imagine a situation in which somebody challenges it and says, it's been so many years, you can't keep operating under an emergency order contrary to your own land use ordinances. So, as I said, we shouldn't be planning on this being an indefinite thing.
Yeah, I, I think that was the advice, actually, now that you mention it, that was the advice, that's good to know. So, just as we move forward, I, I want to make sure that, maybe in if there's any reason to be offering us some clarification around that, 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 that's, that's on top of mind. Because it seemed like it was a, a big concern the last time. And, and then, and then also, if we can check, I mean, the property belongs to the Urban Renewal Agency. So, wouldn't it be the case that if someone were to challenge it, would, it would have to be the landowner? I mean, we're the landowners, so are we, is there, is there actually any concern about that at all?
Well, they
Who could challenge us outside the landowners, is what, I guess what I would ask.
Well, I can imagine a developer who would want to actually have the opportunity to develop property that is now sort of in reserve. There may be others, or, or, you know, people who want to build housing or whatever, who might want to say, you just can't keep preventing me from taking advantage of your own ordinances indefinitely under an emergency order.
Okay, sounds like it's pretty, pretty, we're in okay shape as far as the emergency order goes.
I think we are, because we have, you know, we, we have good reason for continuing, at least for a while.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Member Penamara?
Yeah, I just wanted to share a memory of the conversation that we had that we felt that our emergency owner was contingent upon the state having a, an, an emergency, a declared emergency with federal government or whatever, and that the extension, and that we felt, I think, at that time, whether that's true or not, that our emergency order was contingent upon that being in effect. So, I don't know if your memory checks that.
I remember that conversation, and I, I just remember a lot of cautions that we got when we went to go extend the emergency order, and I just want to make sure that we have nothing to be concerned about should this board decide to extend the lease.
I'm reasonably certain we aren't constrained by, by the state, but I will double check and certainly that you'd know if we are.
Okay, great. Any other questions on that topic? The other thing I want to mention is, it does say in the, the lease agreement that this can be extended, let's see, the language is that this can be extended with a request in writing. And that can be either from the lesser or the leasing, is that correct?
Correct.
And, so I'm a little confused about the fact that O H C S is saying that we can invite them to write a, a proposed, that, that they will write a proposal for this extension, if I remember the staff report correctly, Gary, and, but we don't have an agreement with O H C S. And so this seems, it's, there seems to be a disconnect there. So, would we be wanting a request in writing from O H C S with a proposal? Or would we be wanting that from, from access?
Both, we need a request in writing to extend the lease. But we also need a request in writing, in my view, from O H C S, indicating that they wish to you know, extend the period of time for their their subgrantee access to perform under their agreement.
And then also, I think I remember that we, in the staff report, you're talking about the potential for O H C S is suggesting that they are open to discussing their, them leasing, or no, them paying for the lease
Some arrangement where the Tura would receive some compensation.
And would that require an agreement with O H C S then? So would we be, for the first time, entering into an agreement with O H C S?
It would, it would.
I see, okay. Are there any other questions? I think that's it for my questions. So we don't have, there's not, there's, there is no request at this time, is that?
No, there's nothing in writing.
Okay.
The only thing you have in writing is the email from Representative Marsh.
Gotcha. All right, are there any other questions before I open this up to speaker request forms? Member Perry Miller?
Thank you. So Gary, just looking at your report, you have those six questions that we should probably consider. Do you think that eventually we should go through all of those and have conversations about those today? Or is that something, I'm struggling to think about this, since there isn't anything in writing. So it kind of feels like this is a really helpful timeline in catching us up in the work that you've been doing and the conversations that you've been having, but I'm not really sure where to go.
There are some ongoing discussions at the staff level that are scheduled to occur next week and in subsequent weeks on this topic. So I think it would be helpful if the staff received some indication from Tura as to whether you wish to change the disposition plan and no longer consider conveying trailers to the current residents, which is a part of the request from Representative Marsh, and whether you wish to consider extending the use of the site to support the transitional housing project, and if so, for how long? So we're looking for some guidance from the policy level that we can talk with the other parties about.
Those are two separate things, though, right? I mean, one, one is the disposition plan, which was required when we took over the
Right.
RVs.
Which exists.
Which exists, right. And then, and then the other was, the other is whether or not to extend the lease. And, and as of yet, we don't have a request for that.
That's right.
Okay, member Colay?
Just on the note of extending the lease, though, I mean, it's my understanding that even if we were moving forward with the disposition plan, if there were people that didn't want to do that, we were never gonna move them out of, you know, kick them out of there. We would have extended the lease until those people had found alternative housing other than the Gateway. But that was our course of action. If I remember correctly, that was gonna be our course of action before all of this new questions and information had come in. Is that correct?
I, I think so. I mean, if I understand what you're saying correctly, I mean, I, I'm not sure. I, I think, you know, there's there's just, we're, we have this lease agreement that we've referred to several times in the, in the, in the, over the course of this conversation, and, and it really, it really expresses how we can move forward, how we can renew and all of that kind of stuff, but I don't think we're there yet. It doesn't sound like we're there yet, and, and I'm just, want to make sure that we're not jumping over any steps before we get to the discussion of extending for the amount of time that they need.
You know, the, the lease agreement provides that either party can request an extension, but that that request needs to be, I think, by the end of this year. By the end of the calendar year. So that, that leaves, if, so if no request for an extension is made, that means that the agreement would expire in twenty-five days thereafter, which is short.
Member Byers?
I think to Counselor Colay's question, I mean, Member Colay's question, the discuss, the, the communications moving forward is that we have a plan. There is an end date to the plan. You can also request an extension of that end date of that plan. You just need to request it, and that's baked into the lease.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments before I bring up speakers? All right, so at this time, we will ask Janice Lynn to come forward and state your name and city for the record. I'm gonna hand this down to you, Eleanor, to the, so we can get it to the recorder. Thank you for coming, take your time.
My name is Janice Lynn, J A N I S L N E S, spoke to you one other time. I was asking questions and I left those with you. And so, just to reiterate, if I cry, we all know, it's mirons looking for a happy place to go, so that might happen. And so the last time I was here, I was just talking about my position. And as time goes by, I'm finding a couple of other people who are in my position, which means we were affected by the fire, we were affected by our lives, okay. That was from nineteen fifty-five, go away. I'm just saying, it just
Take your time.
We were affected by a lot of things. And when I was affected, it was the fire. All of my retirement businesses went down with that. And then, you know, I fell, broke things, went to the hospital, had a stroke and all of that, and found myself in a position I didn't expect to be. And didn't know how to do anything, and so some, someone suggested I check out Access, because I chose, I chose financially to spend all my fire money so I could stand here. Her name is Flipina, she'll still flip you off on her own, and my leg will work when it wants to. But that's what I chose to do for my life. I chose to live there, as I mentioned, because it's long and narrow, and it's not the wonderful wheelchair accessible housing that you're all making for people who are in wheelchairs. It doesn't work for me, so this is my choice. And when I'm, when I'm there, I see people who have given up a choice. They're there because it's a roof over their heads and a roof over their kids' heads. But there are also people there who are saying, please, give us something to build on. For instance, you know, I get different dates of when things are gonna happen. So I actually called, I heard that there was this meeting here tonight, and I just went, I don't, nobody told me. And so I called Access and talked to my person, Michelle. And I said, so what's going on? And she goes, well, we just heard yesterday there was this meeting. And can I ask you a question before we go into anything? And she said, are you still as determined as you were to put this trailer in a long-term residential, I don't know, experience for yourself? Are you still driven that way? And I said, absolutely. And what I'd like to mention now, there's somebody in this room who's helping me do that. He's a part of the, the building. And what I'd like to mention now, there's somebody in this room who's helping me do that. He's a part of the um, the building, you know, taking care of the, the property. I had a um. Propane leak scared me beyond belief. They immediately came out, they turned everything off. I said, I'm going away for a while. Um, he came in, turned the propane up, and then they went in and made it. Um, long-term successful for me. Meaning they redid knobs, they did everything so I would be safe. Because they heard what I said, which is, um. This isn't just a roof over my head for this temporary time till the end of the year. I want to redo this, what, what is being called to be how I'm gonna be living on the planet. And I know for a fact there are other people. That I've talked to there who are waiting for this to come to some completion because they have plans in place, but they can't go. Until it's decided what they get to go with. They have spaces available to put their trailer in, they have things stuffed in their, in their, you know, in their travel trailers, ready to go, but. Things get extended and we're not gonna do anything till January because, you know, and all the gossip stories and all of that. There, there are some of us that are looking at this and we've talked to, you know. Uh, first of all, I thank those of you who came and talked to me afterwards about, you know, hearing what I said, I felt heard. And there are people who aren't being heard. Because they want to go now. They have a space. I have three choices, but this particular trailer needs some work. And after this event with the propane, um, Mike and Adrian came out and just said, you know what, we're here for you, we're gonna take care of you. And one of them, who's in this room, um, sat there and explained to me how I could change out the propane heater. For a on-demand electric heater. How I could turn off the heating system from the propane and do an electrical thing with something else. They looked at this as. Being able to address it as a long-term living environment. That's safe and not just, oh, we're gonna go plug it in somewhere and live in a travel trailer. And that's the part that I would like to see addressed. Where the people who are now ready to go. Who might need just a little bit more. Oof. Of getting there can be addressed instead of the folks that are saying, I'm just waiting for them to find me a house. I'm just waiting for me to find a piece of property for me to go to live on. That happens. And you see it all the time, but there are those of us who are driven, who know this might be the only life we got. We've had physical stuff that we're dealing with, we've had financial stuff that shocked us all, and it would be really. I don't know, when I talked to my person today at Access, she just said, are you still that driven? And I said, I have to be, I'm it. Um, so, um, first of all, again, second of all, third of all, fifth of all, thank you for hearing what I'm saying and understanding, I'm not the only one. Um, and the part that confuses me, I listen to.
Janice, I'm gonna have to say, we give people usually about five minutes, we're about six minutes in, so I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, so just, you know, listen to the other side of everything and understand that, you know, not all of us are there for freebies. Here to save our lives, okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, my darling.
Take care. Uh, next speaker request form is Matthew Havenear. Matthew, is that how you say your last name, Havenear?
Yeah.
Thank you. Here you go. Please state your name and city for the record.
Good evening, Mary Council, Tura, City of the Town staff members. My name's Matthew Havenear, uh, the town, um, just outside of town residence. Um, I'm here tonight as the Deputy Director and Housing Recovery Director of the Jackson County Community Long-Term Recovery Group. A lot of familiar faces I've worked with on this project, uh, since the four families who lived in the gateway. We, uh, shared a lot of calls together in the early days, and you might remember with the Gateway Project, which was initiated by the City of Town. Uh, went through passion with advocacy that I committed for, paid for. It's been an incredible solution for many families, uh, since the fire, it was one of the first solutions they ever had. So I appreciate it for that. One of the early project missions, if not the primary mission of the Gateway, was to house families in the Phoenix Town School District. There's not a lot of talk about Phoenix Town School District families in the Gateway, uh, in the agenda and then. In the conversations I've had when, when we're considering an end date, an urgent transition for Gateway. Another one thing, one of the days that are on the table right now is mid-school year. Um, I know that as a family man and a father, school is children are disrupting. Uh, a severe, severe, their housing stability in the middle of a school year. Uh, can be, can impact their education, certainly will. Um, Phoenix Town School District has been amazing since the initiation of this project, and I know that they will do everything they can to support those families. Um, but when you're looking at the timing of, of ending a gateway project in January, in the middle of winter, um, it can be very hard for school to share. Uh, another thing, as my housing recovery hat, um, I'm very aware of housing market and, uh, I know that options for families to move. In January, February, March, not great. Um, we see more movement in the market in the summer months. Um, and they would have a lot more options and success to find housing solutions, not during the middle of school year. Um, so with those, rec, uh, that experience that I just recommended in the City of Town, I consider that. The school is short and they're still waiting at Gateway. I'm aware of at least twenty, so I guess there's probably many more. But I know for a fact there's at least twenty children that are there that go to school in Phoenix Town School District. Um, asking them to be displaced in the middle of school year. Would be extremely hard for those families to be, to change this, we got to be, um, in the middle of the transfer. So, um, I asked that, you know, the City of Town. Uh, extend. The Gateway Project. I also think they should consider a phased approach to it again, so that there aren't fifty families looking for housing at the same time. Um, in a limited, uh, inventory market. And that's it. Is that my cue? Uh, so I understand it's homecoming league at our high school, uh, and in spirit of homecoming. Um, please, if you can, ensure that these families can have their own permanent homecoming, which is a recreational trailer, but a permanent solution. Many of the programs that you're assigned to, to serve fire survivors are just now rolling out. While we've had some success earlier on, the HARP program, just the primary state relief program, has not, has yet to distribute any ones. Uh, they are just starting. Uh, the HARP program is still, is still pre-planned and, and, and a long way, a long way from being a solution. Um, while there's lots of progress being made, we have a long way to go. And so I just ask that you consider that, uh, the limited options we can present are not the primary options that fire survivors are going to have to their disposal. And just please keep in mind, uh, the families with children there. Um, and the timing of school year and the housing margin of time, and putting fifty people into, uh, housing search plans.
Uh, excuse me, Matt, uh. Can we relax? We don't have the same rules here, so I'd like to ask Matthew a couple of questions if, if you don't mind. Um, first of all, Matthew, really appreciate some of the points you brought up, um, we feel pretty strongly. And, and you're right, we are passionate about, um, uh, that project. So, uh. I know that in the communications that we got from Pam Marsh talked, uh, talked about. The timing and HARP and HOP, and, and I think Long-Term Recovery Group, correct me if I'm wrong, has been involved with. A lot of the organizations that are, are working on, uh, that program. Is there any indication at this time when? You know, I think that's part of like the concern here, at least that's what was, is expressed, is that. HARP and HOP is not out yet. And, um, so in terms of like just trying to plan for. Uh, create a transitional plan, whoever, whoever ends up doing that, whoever's laying that is. What are, what, how is the HARP and HOP coming along?
The, the latest information I have from OHCS is that, uh, the first, uh, families that have been grew for HARP. Should get, uh, access to that. Uh, I don't have the exact date, um, but very soon, I know they're estimated fall twenty-twenty-four. So HARP is, is going to be an option. There's, uh, I don't have the exact date, um, but in the, uh, I would expect this year. Um, and then, um, in the next couple of months, like, it would be the first. But the beginning of the HARP program is not, is, there's, there's lots of steps to that. Um, they'll still have to go through duplications of it. It's, um, the HARP board will look very much like a pre-qualify, a pre-approval. Uh, to go, uh, purchase or, or find your housing solution, but there, uh, that's the start of the process. Um, to, to the complete of them being in that permanent hall, uh, takes some time, but I know that the HARP program is. Um, it's almost here, very soon.
Yeah.
And the HOP, on the HOP side, uh, still a lot of planning, um, and I don't know the, the, the exact date.
Yeah, I think I, I read somewhere in one of the communications that they were looking at April, does that sound right to you? Um, for s- some of the housing solutions.
Um, I know that the Royal Oaks Development, uh, that's probably April one, I know, I saw that the Royal Oaks Development in Phoenix was, was, uh. Uh, hoping for an April, uh, application, we, many of you might be familiar with that project as. Um, yeah, a lot of you were involved in that as well, uh. And the hospital, yes, guys, doing a good job getting that project going, um, that is one of the, uh, gonna be a great option, I think, for some of the families in Gateway. Um, and they're looking at applications in April going into the hospital.
Okay, that's a good question.
Counselor Perry Miller? I mean, member, thank you. Just, um, so Access is in charge of. Helping folks get into that program, is that right? Do you know if they're planning to prioritize Gateway families for that?
For HARP.
For Royal Oaks?
Uh, yeah, I think Royal Oaks has a fire survivor priority, uh, most, almost, you know, any project that's funded by OHCS, DRR. Has that priority. Um, today, they're in, the City of Town. Um, the first development was Renaissance, uh, which we went to that ribbon cutting, and, uh, the second development in Town that has been an option, we actually kept the roof this way, it was. Age plus, uh, Town Senior. And so there's been only two options, so HARP, no. Uh, at this point, we're kind of.
I guess. Wait, just to clarify, my question, what, do you know of Access, prioritizing the Gateway families for Royal Oaks? And you may not know that, because I know you're not with Access.
Um, but I, I. Yeah, I would advocate for that.
Thanks, guys.
Good to meet you, though. Fantastic.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the work that you do.
Appreciate it all, thank you.
Yep. All right, so, uh, are there any other questions or comments? And then I'm gonna ask you, Gary, again, one more time, what, what, what you need from us tonight? Any more questions or comments? All right, one more time, what, what, what do you need to go to your next meeting, which I think is on the ninth, is that right?
The next meeting with the, uh, partners is on, uh, October ninth. Uh, and. It would be helpful for me to know if the. Tura wishes to continue to offer. Trailers at low or no cost to existing residents of the Gateway. Uh, and. So that's, that's a question I'd like to hear some direction on. Uh, and.
Whether or not we want to stop the disposition plan, okay?
And secondly, um. To, uh, request. Written proposals from OHCS and Access to extend. The project beyond January. Of twenty-twenty-five.
Counselor, or member Penamra?
Yeah, one of the things that, um, I keep thinking about is, um, Matthew mentioned the idea of a phased approach. Which I think from the point of view of the residents, people who are like ready to take a trailer and ready to go. Um, ha- letting that happen, um, having folks who need a little bit longer, need a bit, a little bit longer. Um, I, I just want to echo what, uh, and what, uh, Member Perry Miller said, is I really do hope Access is connecting. Folks in the Gateway with the Housing Authority application to get them towards Royal Oaks. But here's my question, um, I have heard. That, and I don't remember where, is that for Access, um, to break even or to pencil out. They need a certain number of those trailers filled, so I think the question is, if a phased approach. Would lead to, uh, happier timelines for the folks in the Gateway. Um, can OHCS make that financially feasible to Access? So that we can, uh, follow, um, that kind of a plan? If indeed it, it, it does lead to happier outcomes. So that's my question.
Member Byers?
Well, to Member Penamra's point, if there is a phased plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding that it would be Access's responsibility to implement a plan that has phases. And that, especially after having just read that sparkling, um.
Way, bravo.
Brava. It seems like so much of that actually is not under the, uh, the Urban Renewal Agency's purview.
Well, I mean, like, I'll answer that directly, as concise as I can. As to what Tura's responsibility is and role is. Tura is the property owner. Tura is, Tura is the owner of the trailers. Tura is not responsible for coming up with a transition plan.
Right.
Access is being compensated for that.
Right.
Tura is not responsible for relocating people. OHCS through Access is responsible for that. Tura is not responsible for continuing to provide support. To Access for managing the site. They are in discussions with OHCS on that topic.
So a follow-up to that? So then, to me, it would make sense if this is an outcome that is needed by the participants in the program. And something that they are advocating for, then it, to me, if, if I'm following everything correctly, then it would be up to Access to. Make a request to us to extend the lease. Agreement per the existing one already. And I would, I would like to see, like, a proposal from them outlining a plan and a timeline, just so that we know what's going to happen in that extension.
And, and the. Suggestion of number two. On, in the, uh, potential motions. The second, second of two, was to request that they make that proposal earlier than is provided in the lease agreement. So that we have more than twenty-five days. To close out that project, if that's what's.
Yeah, that seems like a huge administrative burden in a short amount of time.
Does it make sense then, if I can add on to your question, does it make sense then that, since OHCS is also saying they'd be, they'd be willing to prepare a proposal? The agreement or their compensation for Access's work is coming from OHCS, but for them to prepare a joint proposal and request for an extension?
I think that that's exactly right.
Okay. Member Colay?
Yeah, this is very helpful, and I feel like it's distilling a lot of this down to really kind of two questions, the question of extension and the question of trailer disposition. I'm curious now how all of what we just said factors into the decision about. Whether or not to move forward with the trailer disposition, whether that's now or later. I know that was a concern of Representative Marsh that. It would, you know, potentially move people into that, and they wouldn't get permanent housing if that's what they wanted. We've heard from people who. They want to move their trailer and that's what they want, period. So I don't know how we feel about.
We're also hearing from.
Position plan now.
OHCS, OHCS, who's written and provided us with, uh, documentation that people who move their trailers will be, would be supported in. Uh, moving costs, but also would not lose any of their benefits or access to HARP or HOP, like that's been verified in, in our packet. Uh, and. Uh, and given, uh, how much testimony we've heard over the months about. People's experiences and, and, I mean, I just got a text the other day that used explicit language about wanting to get out of there now. And is wondering what we're gonna do, but I also see the value in at least waiting until after the meeting on the ninth. To make that disposition decision, but. From my view, those are two different matters, and I think it's gonna be really important for us to keep those clearly distinctly different. Uh, one is the extension of the mission and the other one is the disposition plan. Uh, that, member Colay?
If we, this is a question for you, Gary, if we said tonight we want to move forward with the disposition plan. Do you have any idea of like when somebody would actually get their trailer?
I would expect that some folks would be. I would expect that some folks would be contacting me as early as tomorrow.
When that decision's made, it's going.
I would certainly want to see, I mean, I, I don't want to ignore Pa- uh, Representative Marsh's concerns about, um, a sense of abandonment to the, to the, to the benefits. Um, it, for those folks who would be taking a trailer to another location, um, some sort of assurances, I mean, we, I think we've had assurances from O H C S. I'm confident at this point in time that they're not going to abandon uh, on the benefits, but, but maybe some language that they can write into the proposal and in their agreements that that they will proactively pursue where they are and proactively communicate. So folks always know no matter where they are with those trailers, where, where these, um, where these benefit, where the process and these benefits are at, so that there isn't a lack of communication, that people get fall through cracks and and end up not having access. Member Byers?
If we move forward with this disposition plan, um, it doesn't require the inhabitants to take it.
Right.
So.
It never has.
Exactly. So I feel like if we keep that as an option for people who want to take advantage of that option, and we have this assurance now through this F A Q sheet from, um, O H C S that it does not impact, it does not create a duplication of benefits. Um, I, I don't see how it does necessarily become the issue that's been feared because it's up to the resident, right?
Yeah. So I guess I would ask the count, uh, the, Member Panamara?
I'll, I'll just add that I, I think the concern is maybe the, the resident might not know
Mm-hmm.
what they're getting into, if the present company accepted, um, and that, and just take the bird in the hand versus waiting a little bit longer. So, um, I don't disagree with you. I just want to say that there needs to be, um, information. And again, I think we've done a really great job of providing information that people just need to understand.
To that point, I mean, in my mind already, I'm pairing it with an anticipated request for an extension of the lease for more time for that exact thing, the educational component. But does our, but does, do we need to reexamine our disposition plan so that it realigns with a date that may change based on a meeting that is happening in the near future?
Um, no, I wasn't suggesting that. I wasn't suggesting extending it out if folks, folks are ready to take. My concern is if there's an exodus of a critical mass, uh, and Access or says this doesn't pencil out for us anymore, that there could be concerns.
You got it.
And I realize that's not our responsibility.
You got it.
But in a way, we have a political responsibility.
No, you just shared a key, a key point, but I was.
Oh, we have a community responsibility to that situation.
No, I, but thank you for sharing the part about Access deciding it doesn't pencil out because I wasn't thinking about.
This is in part why I think it might be better to, to make that approval for the disposition plan, uh, after the ninth, because we still don't even have, we don't have a proposal from O H C S on funding for anything. We have a conversation that happened outside the purview of, of our executive director, correct me if I'm wrong. And, uh, and we have been operating off of these phone calls and Zoom meetings for so long, and they have ended us here where we don't have a solution. And, um, even though we thought we were headed towards one, so I do think it's time for this body to really start to look for hard, you know, proposals and, um, and commitments of funds before we make decisions that are impacting people's lives the way that this is. Um, so it might be, even though I think I feel as inclined that to not, to not tell residents, you know, that they can't take a, a trailer and go if that's what they want to do, and, um, it's hard, given the amount of communication that we're getting, it might be better for us to make that decision at the next meeting, um, and we can put it before the council meeting, um, which would be the sixteenth after your meeting on the ninth, so that we can at least hear that we're going to be, there's some incoming promise of funding, there's some income security, there's some in incoming transition plan, that there's some assurances from O H C S and Access that the performance of the past is going to be, is going to be, A, is going to enable this project to do a phased plan and so that we're not evicting people, uh, next year in the middle of the school year, but maybe after sometime during the summer, you know, whatever, whatever these things that we're hearing about are, are, um, are that we, that we are providing some assurances.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we have a role here, and that's as the property owner. We need, we need to stop making decisions on these casual meetings with leadership.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, and, and I guess I, I would just close those comments by saying that yes, this started with us. It started with us when people were donating trailers all over, uh, from all over the country, and people were living in used trailers out at Immigrant Lake and Rogue River, and we said, come into town where we can take care of you, and it blew up from there. And, uh, and, you know, uh, grants and offers of new trailers and this whole new project was before us that we were passionate about and that we were wholeheartedly all in. But it's a bit, it's a huge difference than where this whole thing started. And, and at this point in time, things are slowing down enough where we can ask everybody to take the time to give us some agreements, let's get it in writing, let's know what the funding looks like, who's going to do what, what are the performance benchmarks? And what is this, if, if, if a transition plan is, uh, going to be incremented, uh, incremental and phased, what does that look like? How, 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 how do we deal with that in the future? So we don't find ourselves in this exact same spot again.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
Does that, uh, provide you with, uh?
Well, I, I, I guess my comment would be that, um, anticipating that we would receive a proposal um, seven days after the next meeting of the parties is pretty optimistic based upon our past.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because of the sixteenth date. Yeah. Uh, we get an email that said we will get a proposal by blah, blah, blah. I mean, I don't want to hold up the disposition plan over this, and maybe that's not advisable. So to the question of whether or not to move the disposition plan forward, I'll entertain a motion. We don't take testimony after the speaker's heard, um.
We have an approved plan now.
I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, would it be possible to vote to move forward with the plan unless there were some, something that you found out about in that, in your next meeting that would make it not be a good idea? I g- I guess that's what I'm a little bit afraid of. If, if, based on whatever information you get at the next meeting, um, you had, you had some concerns about whether that was, um, doable? Or are, are you just really confident that this is, this is the next step we really need to do? And I guess that's a question, not just for staff, but for everyone.
Uh, Member Byers?
Well, I, after Gary responds to.
Okay, uh, I, I guess my perspective is, is that you have, you have an approved plan now. You voted on several times that the Oregon hap- Meeting Services Department approved. Uh, and request from your representative to or, or move away from that way. And we have residents, you heard one tonight, we're ready to move forward. Uh, and they see this as you have an approved plan. Can I, can I apply to get my trailer now? And I'm not sure what's standing in the way of that, other than not having an intermediary, i.e. Access, who's a willing partner in giving the information.
So if I can follow up, I'm just hearing you say, Gary, and I, I guess I just didn't, wasn't clear to me before, O H C S supports moving forward with the disposition plan as does Access, is what I'm. Access and O H C S both support the disposition plan, moving ahead with it, or they have no objections?
Well, uh, uh, no, Access does not wish to move ahead with the plan.
With the disposition plan, but O H C S and O H C S?
Yeah, they would be supportive of going ahead.
We have that email in our packet.
Yeah, but within it, just about concerns about residents not knowing what they're getting into, were there other concerns besides, um?
Have there been other concerns reported to you, Gary?
Only those that are in the, uh, email from Representative Marsh. Those are the same concerns expressed by Access.
Member Byers?
Should we choose to move forward with the disposition plan tonight? Um, is there any way we could include as part of the actual application, so we know any person who is considering taking advantage of this plan also knows that there is the potential for this extension of the project? Is there any way we can include information about these pending decisions so that they can choose to wait to apply should they want to?
Sure, we can do that. That would, you know, that would involve our delivering the information out to the residents.
If it's baked into the application, then it's just one delivery that they would be requesting anyway, right?
So you're saying that we would be delivering that information?
I'm not sure that Access would be willing to deliver that information to the resident.
Okay. Member Perry Miller?
I think my fear is just, um, um, like Member Panamara said, if a number of residents leave and then Access has the potential to sort of frankly throw up their hands and say, we can't afford to do this anymore, we're out, that worries me, um, about making this decision right now. They've indicated that, you know, this is a possibility, which is kind of shocking, but, um, that is my hesitation in moving forward with it now. But I don't know if we can, you know, we can't control what all of these other agencies are going to do in, within this time in our next meeting. Um, but I think that's just, that's what keeps coming to my mind.
That's why having some sort of proposal with funding assurance is critical, I think. Member Prestizo?
Well, it seems to me with, um, you know, great until our concerns and such are brought to the meeting on the ninth, you know, the meeting on the sixteenth, it may obviously feel a little better about some of these things. I, I, so that's a, that's a big one to have. Think successfully let some people do that, and then the left just have to crash.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't seem well, but I also think that, you know, we can provide the information with your main, or coming down the way, people who still decide to take their trailer and go, I mean, they're making an informed decision that we shouldn't get overburdened with trying to save everybody, especially if we wind up in a spot of trying to save themselves. So, um, right now, I'm, I'm, I like the translation for the progressive plan. I think that's a great idea, because some people are firmly ready to go. But I think it might help us be a little more confident if we gather again on the sixteen after we see, we may not have anything in writing yet, but hopefully build a pretty clear thought with your intentions.
Can I just ask a quick question based on that? I mean, O H C S has already indicated that they, it, they would be open to prepare, providing us with a proposal.
Yes.
So we could ask for that tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Member Panamara?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it would help clarify things if Access were to, um, you know, give to meet with us, um, at our meeting, if that's, um, not, you know, going around the normal process. Uh, I, it's just from the emails, it's just kind of, so a lot of hand wringing, but I'm, I, I'd really like to know, um, specifically.
I would too. I think, I think the other things, if we were to ask O H C S, I mean, again, O H C S, the grant to provide these services is coming from O H C S. They're funding it, and they have an agreement with another organization. Uh, so on some level, it's like we're looking to O H C S to provide us with those assurances, that if we extend this any further, um, uh, that, you know, we're, we're open to consideration about that, that, uh, whatever assurances they'd be providing, it would also be also on what we can expect in terms of performances moving forward. So I guess what I'm saying is that I, I, it's going to be important that we get those assurances from O H C S first, because this is all moot without it. Uh, Member Byers?
Gary, I've heard you say tonight that, um, we have a disposition plan that we've all voted on a couple of times. And, um, I wonder if it impacts it at all for us to address it on the sixteenth instead of tonight.
That's, that's fine. I, yeah, I'm just looking for direction on what we should be doing.
Yeah.
And if, uh, uh, if someone comes in sooner, wants to try to get the trailer going, and, uh, we can just tell them we're delaying it until you reboot, review it further on the sixteen.
And hear, hear back from, from you what the what the night, with the meeting of the ninth?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, Member Prestizo?
Just clarification. So if I'm understanding it right, that right now, if, if we were to extend the date till, I'm thinking summer sometime would be the optimal time.
So you're not talk, so what I want to do, I want to ask for the record that you're talking about now, the, the extension of the lease agreement, right? We were just.
Well, yeah, I'm sort of going to be talking about.
Okay.
Um, so if we extend the lease agreement, is, um, O H C S, they're committed to funding Access for that period, or we don't know that?
Their latest, uh, well, I, I don't, I'm not sure that they have an agreement to fund the continued operation of the site. The agreement between O H C S and Access, as I read it, is for the, um, navigation piece to mo- to get people from temporary housing into permanent housing.
So how did the funding of the site?
The, the, the funding of the operation of the site is, uh, um, from rent that's being collected from the resident.
But they, but what we're hearing from O H C S, and again, this is, we're hearing it, we don't have it in writing, is why it's so difficult. Uh, we're hearing that they will extend the funding, uh, for services with Access who have, uh, in order to continue for another period of time, which we understand could be as long as a year.
And that, that's a discussion that's going on between those two entities.
And so I guess what I'm trying to get at is if some of the residents leave or hit this critical mass where there's not enough rent to cover the operations, is there a likely place where there is some funding that can carry that over for a matter of months? Or are we just, there's no clue where that would come from at this point? Because it sounds like it's not really funding Access, it's at funding the operation.
Yeah.
By proxy, I guess.
Yeah.
The, the discussions I've had so far point to the Oregon Housing Committee Services Department as the entity who that that would fall to their, uh, responsibility and, and one of the, one of the correspondences, I think, from Representative Marsh indicated that, um, if I can find it quickly here. She indicated in one of her emails that. She indicated in one of her emails that O H C S had continued, had agreed to continue funding for the site.
And I'm hoping, I'm hoping that, that what happens is you, that we can, we can say to you, go back to that meeting of the ninth, saying we want to entertain that, but we need a proposal.
Yes.
Um, which is what was indicated from, I think it's uh dresser that they would provide, that they're open to providing us with a proposal for the ongoing funding, committed funding
Yes.
for operation beyond January of twenty twenty five, right?
Yes, yes. That was from.
Operation, you're just talking.
Yeah, but how, how they pay for that through access um is kind of between them and.
Yeah, that's fine, because my takeaway at this point is, I don't know if everyone agrees, is that our desire would be that we extend ongoing to the summer, because I think that would be a good time for families with kids. But they have a progressive plan, so the people ready to carry the trailers and go can go.
Mm-hmm.
And then by, you know, July or August, we're going to just have everyone out. And so that's our desire and we need these other agencies to tell us if they're on board with that and if the funding's going to be there to make that happen.
To me, I feel like we're not in a position to dictate that. I think, uh, I mean, I think we can say our desire, our desire is summertime.
This is what, this is what we're thinking would be a good plan and are they agreeing?
Based on community input.
Yeah.
Based on community input.
Yeah.
Uh, member Panomar?
Can I just add, because that is, that is the, um, our decision is to extend or not extend, right? Or extend to when? So I think that decision is contingent upon, like you were saying, Dave, that, that something actually happened. That people actually get either their trailer removed into permanent housing. And it feels like without that pressure of a timeline, this could extend, you know, indefinitely.
Yeah. I also think it, 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 it's contingent on a written request and, and a proposal as O H, O H C S is indicating they will do.
All I'm trying to do is inform what we think would be.
It's a second one.
That would be open to considering. I, um, member Colay?
Do we need to make motions on requesting a written proposal or have we already communicated that to Gary?
I mean, I in, correct me if I'm wrong, procedurally, there's no action in front of us because there's no written request. We have no action. Am I wrong?
Right, you, you, you're correct, but let me, let me see if I can get some direction.
Consensus.
Some kind of consensus for, to take back to the October ninth meeting. Uh, that uh, the Tura would, would, the, the Tura would like to see a proposal from O H C S and from Access for extension of the use of the uh Tura property for the operation of the transitional housing program in writing. Um, and that the Tura has indicated a willingness to consider an extension. Possibly through the remainder of the current school year, of the, of the spring sema- spring semester, whatever it's called.
Through the end of the spring semester.
The end of the spring semester. That, the, the council's, the, the agency's willing to consider those elements. And invites a proposal from O H C S and Access to continue the operation through that period of time.
I would just say that uh, my response to that, and I'll hand it over, is that I think Matt made a really good point that uh disruption is, is something that we need to consider. And I would want to see us go a couple of months beyond that, maybe midsummer, so that families have a chance to, to recoil a little bit after, yeah. Uh, member Prestizo and then member Byers?
That, I agree a hundred percent. I think you put it really well. Just, I think it, I would want to emphasize again that, you know, that it will continue even though we're allowing people to start taking their trailers and going now and very soon, because summer rated. That would be the only thing I would add, unless I would apply to your.
Member Byers?
Well, to member Prestizo's point, as part of this, we would hope that there would be funding to support a phased exit.
Yeah.
All right. Good, good addition.
Great. And I think a, a closing point would be to say that um, we're already, we're already really clear that um, any future development on the Gateway Project is just beyond that anyway. Um, I, I know the engineering, I think you said it would probably take about a year anyway. Um, uh, we have gangness to work on. Um, there's, you know, so uh, I'd like to put, I'd like to put to rest finally, the rhetoric that peer funding is what's uh driving our decisions. It's nonsense and offensive. Um, so uh, that, that's the case, you
Sure.
Yeah, you, you conveyed to us kind of the timing of the project. Is that correct? Right?
Uh, I'll just add that the vision has always been to create housing that people can afford, permanent housing. This is the solution, not the transitions, so.
All right. Uh, so do you have, I think
I have.
Any objections to that direction? So you have a consensus?
I think I have the sense of the, of the Tura.
So yeah, July, August kind of a thing and
Yes.
I'm trying to push it on to that edge. I mean, we don't want to get so late in the summer that people are preparing to go to school, you know, so it's going to have to be that sweet spot. Yeah. All right. Um, is there anything else on this matter before we close the meeting? That's, that's the only agenda item. Do you have anything uh that you want to put for future agenda?
Well, in, in the meantime, if we have residents who would like to pursue moving sooner, we'll meet with them and get that process started.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good. All right, very good. Um, yeah, and I will hand, I have some communicate, I have a communication on that that I want to hand off to you as well. Um, all right, um, items for, from any of the board members? Hearing none. Item five is written communications. There are none. Uh, so this meeting's adjourned at five twenty-five. Let's take five minutes, uh, four minutes. And I've, did I, what did I say? Five forty-five? Seven twenty-six, uh, we'll uh, open the council meeting at seven thirty.